What do you say?
I don't.
Good morning. Welcome to Newton County Regular Commissioner's Court. It's Monday, August 8, 2022, and we're going to open up in prayer with Brother Joe Shannon from the United Bestis Church.
Yeah.
Our grace, the Father, we want first of all, praise you and thank you for giving us one more day in this service.
Yes, Lord.
Or we just ask you to be with us now as we are taking the business of this county. Bless this county, bless the commissioner's board, or bless each one that's involved. Or we want to pray for our state, our community, and our government, Lord. Bless your church. Or we count on you to continue to guide us and correct us. Give us the best you can, or control all things that we know you keep. All things come to the purpose of you. Or not be with us, digest and correct us. We love you, Lord.
Amen.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Brother Joe. Called a meeting order. We do have a quorum here today, and we express our condolences to Mr. Fongby. His brother passed away this morning, and I'm sure he's not here today. Acknowledge any guests that's here today also, and we're opening it up for public hearing. And I hear, I see Mr. Norton would like to speak on item number two. And you want to do that now?
Yes, sir.
You have five minutes.
Yes, sir. Well, I say on the end, proposal to pave a road over down to Leeve Land, Plum Road. Someone come in, my understanding is they read off some property, and now they're going to extend the pavement on that road. And of course, that's going to be some expense to the county. And I don't understand why someone coming in and buying property dictates paving the road. My next, if somebody buys property, we put rock on it. I teach put rock on this one, save the county a few dollars. Paved roads require less maintenance. My three things, it might be a little off the subject, but continue to add roads to my commission. He keeps getting the short end of the stick, and yet these other commissioners continue to pay for their roads. And like I say, I don't understand the necessity to spend the money to pay this road just because someone bought property. Like I said, where I'm at, I bought property off and on, but we didn't pave no road.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Okay, yes, I hear no, I have nothing else on a public hearing, so we'll close that. It's this time to go on to item number one. It's consent agenda. Of course, if y'all read through that and then look through your reports, there is several that's not in there. So on this report, so acknowledge it all, so. Do you have a motion to accept?
I think that motion can accept. There it is. I say.
I say.
Do you agree with me?
Motion been made, Mr. Wyatt and Second Mr. Thompson, that we accept the consent agenda. There's no discussions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sound here. I propose here none, pass. Okay, item number two is considering and deliberate on action of the following items. And number one is to acknowledge and confirm the distinguished service award for 2021 presented by Don Jefferson, Newton County Historical Commission from the Texas Historical, from the Texas Historical Commission. The distinguished award acknowledged that Newton County is above average on the county historical commission performance based on statewide analysis from annual report documentation. Mr. Jefferson is Newton County Historical Commission was one of the eighty-two out of one hundred ninety-three to receive this and then extinguish award. So, Mr. Jefferson, I'd like to award you this award.
Take pictures.
Number two is discussing appropriate and force maintain all of Plum Road in Toledo Village, Section Six, to the same standards as other county roads in that subdivision. I think, Ms. Calp here. Okay, come on up, Ms. Calp. She is also on the agenda to talk about the, that same road.
Yes, good morning. I'm here to ask the commissioners that the county road Plum in Toledo Village, Section Six, to our property be maintained to the same standards that the other part of the county roads are in the subdivision. There was a survey done, and when we purchased the property, and it says Plum on it. I had spoken with the commissioner, and they said it was just a basement. So I went back to Mr. Hillbrand at a win and told him that that was incorrect. He told me no, and I think I could tell y'all happened, because that gives us access to six lots. And so there was, he told me that there was a document filed at the courthouse that states that commissioners would maintain all roads in Toledo Village, Section Six. And we go back to our commissioner and quote that out to you, and I did, and we've been in discussions, which I do affirm that it does, it is tax money, but it was part of the original agreement, and it is overlooked. It has road signs on it. So my last conversation was that can't like start somewhere, because I have a car and I can't get in. If you have a truck, and the pictures in the packet, you can see it's very easy to get in. So he did put, I believe it's a road base, then a part of it, it's not finished. He called Mr. Hillbrand and asked Mr. Hillbrand to come in and mark where it actually ends on the property, and there's a photo, it's the last photo that's on there. You can see the markers. On those markers, because it doesn't go all the way up to the line. Plum is also partially asphalted at this time where the two poles are sitting right. And it stopped because it was just a wall. I understand that. But we purchased it a year ago, and we would like to build a retirement home, but I didn't have access to the property there. And the road, as you can see, has not been maintained at all. And it's been a year. And we are, I believe, getting a start with road base, but it's not all the way up to the marker yet. And then, I guess, as the budget may allow, then we could maintain it to like the rest of the subdivision. Because that is an asset to you, that subdivision is a very nice subdivision, and with asphalted, it's nice. I tried to piece much information in these packets so that y'all could see the property and how it goes in there. And the six lots that we own, that we won't, we don't have true access to, because there's not a, that road is not maintained.
Okay, that, the road is down at its plum.
Yes, sir.
And I see this picture here.
Yes, sir. That's the last one was taken. The road base, I believe, that you used is up to the first two markers. The interrupt shows the last two markers, so we probably can fill that as a woman. Probably from that wall to this wall, we'll add the put on there. That would be the rest of Plum Road. That is a county road.
Have you spoken with the commissioner about?
Spoke to the commissioner three times about it, his secretary, and he sent out an employee of the county. And the boy told me that it's a Plum Road, that it was just a basement. And so I did have a choice, but I'll go for y'all.
Yes, ma'am. Well, without Commissioner Fongby being here, all I know is looking at pictures and hearing what you say.
Well, I can come back next month if something more convenient.
I would, I would suggest to the commissioners to table this out.
I think I don't want to be around next month, and we can discuss this later.
Would that be, y'all wish also?
Yes.
Let me see.
We don't know enough about it.
I make that motion.
Okay. I second.
Great motion been made by Mr. Thompson and Second Mr. Wyatt. We tabled item number two. Any discussion on that? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sound, opposed, here none, pass. Number three, discussing appropriate approved reimbursement to Debco for change of mask notification provider, Genesis. Mr. Olin is not here today. This is a, the nine-one-one, and I've forgotten exactly who we're with now, but they wanted to change to Genesis, and will actually save the county about $2,000 a year. But at same time, I think we need to table that item. Because Olin was supposed to present it today, and he knows a whole lot more about it than I do.
I make a motion, we table that, of course.
I second.
Motion been made, Mr. Thompson, Second Mr. Wyatt, to table item number three. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sound, opposed, here none, pass. Okay, no board is discussing appropriate certified twenty-twenty-two appraisal road, Newton County Commissioner's Court, Mr. Melissa.
Good morning, Mr. Court. Okay. Certification of twenty-twenty-two appraisal road mission to the Newton County Central Court this eighth day of August, twenty-twenty-two. I'm Melissa Burks, Newton County Taxation Minister of Flex, and solemnly affirm that the figures disclosed below are the portions of the approved and certified twenty-twenty-two appraisal road. This appraisal road was certified to me by Morgan and Heron, Chief Appraiser of the Newton Central Appraiser Group, which lists property taxable by Newton County and constitutes the value of the two thousand twenty-two appraisal road for Newton County. Twenty-twenty-two appraisal road information. County, our total appraisal value is $2,848,568,733. Less free taxable value is $90,679,765. Less exemptions, special valuations, homestead tax, $1,444,168,209. Giving a total county taxable value for tax year twenty-twenty-two of $1,313,720,759. Our total number of accounts for twenty-twenty-two is $24,419 on our twenty-twenty-two tax roll. Okay, then moving on to lateral road. Total appraisal value is $2,848,568,733. Less free taxable value, $90,475,137. Less exemptions, special valuations, homestead tax, $1,449,96,907. Our total lateral road taxable value for tax year twenty-twenty-two is $1,308,996,689. And our total number of accounts for lateral road is $24,419. And y'all, I know the court knows, but for those that don't, lateral road, our taxable value is going to be a little different. Our appraisal value will be a little different because of that additional 3,000 mandated exemption if you have the lateral road tax. Okay. Any questions? Any questions on the twenty-twenty-two appraisal road information?
I hear a motion to accept that twenty-twenty-two appraisal road for Newton County.
I think that motion. I second.
Motion been made, Mr. Wyatt, Second Mr. Benson, we certify the twenty-twenty-two appraisal road for Newton County Commission, from the Newton County Commission Report. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sound, opposed, here none, pass. Number five, discussing appropriate, appropriate to certify anticipated collection rate for tax road twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, I'm certificating the collection rate for twenty-twenty-two. I'm Melissa Burks, Taxation Minister of Flex for Newton County. You're hereby certified to the Newton County Commission Report and anticipate collection rate of 100% for tax year twenty-twenty-two, dated this eighth day of August, twenty-twenty-two. And I wanted to make it known that I know y'all know, that Mr. Fort knows. When you figure this collection rate, you use current and delinquent collections. And we're setting at, on lateral road, 100%, on county, 99.3, almost 4%. We will have a large court docket in September and an even larger auction, delinquent tax auction in November. So our collections will exceed 100%.
Last year, we had that discussion. We was at 104, and you lowered it to 96.
I didn't lower.
Well, we lowered it.
That's totally two different things. When I'm, when I increase the taxation, I do it at 100%. Now, after I figured that, it's my understanding I have only 96% of that tax, because.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, all right. You clarified that part.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, here a motion.
Go ahead. I second.
Motion been made, Mr. Thompson, Second Mr. Wyatt, that we certify the anticipated collection rate for tax year twenty-twenty-two as 100%. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sound, opposed, here none, pass. Number six, discussing appropriate certify any excess debt collection for tax road twenty-twenty-one, tax year.
Twenty-twenty-two, yeah.
It's got twenty-twenty-one on here.
Right.
So.
Certification of this.
So let's correct this. Is it twenty-twenty-one or twenty?
Twenty-two.
Right. Okay. We'll change it to twenty-twenty.
Three originals, they say twenty-two. Certification of excess debt collections for tax year twenty-twenty-two. I'm Melissa Burks, Taxation Minister of Flex for Newton County Taxation. You're hereby certified to Newton County, zero excess debt collections for tax year twenty-twenty-two, dated this eighth day of August, twenty-twenty-two, meaning there will, we will have no excess debt collections at the end of this for your twenty-twenty-two. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Melissa.
That needs to be voted on, too.
Ma'am.
Y'all need to make a motion.
Yeah, we'll fix it. I get one of them, do it.
I'll make that motion, make that.
I second.
Motion been made, Mr. Thompson, Second Mr. Benson, we certify any, any tax debt collection tax year twenty-twenty-two. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sound, opposed, here none, pass. Discussing appropriate renew dental, medical, life, vision, Internet Street, Texas Association of County, Mr. Ginger.
Good morning. I'm just here for us to renew. It's that time of year for our county paid bits and employee paid benefits for twenty. They were going to the back to December twenty-second, go through November of twenty-twenty-three. And I have to have this back to them by the seventh, if y'all prove it to be renewed.
Settle to the next month.
Seven, the next one, September.
Okay, now there will be a little increase on that.
We work, but currently the county pays for the employee on like their health, dental, life. And the, the employees have an option of doing a vision, and that's strictly the employees' part. So it would currently pay, we currently pay $9,0416. That includes health, dental, and life. What it would go up to is $9,7534 per person, which is going to be an increase for the whole year. Increase is going to be $85,0416. So it's going up from $8,7720 to $9,4912. That's just the health insurance. That's going up $71.92 per person. The dental went down $0.07, and the life stays the same. But after they go to seventy, the life insurance goes less as they get older. So some of it may not be but $2 or $3, depending on how many at that age it decreases.
In total amount, how much did it go up?
Per person?
No.
For the whole year.
Right.
Right, this is just approximately.
Yeah.
It's $85,0416.
Right.
That's the difference of what we're currently paying and what it's going to go up to.
Oh, that's the difference.
In a year.
That's a plus. Eighty-five, five.
Yes, sir.
We, any more questions? Mr. Ginger.
So we, we, this, okay, we down, down to this final quota. We don't have any other insurance. We, we went out for.
Well, we have, they have, like, they've gotten some more. They have some more options. But over the years, if we go out for different bids, I know there for a while, the county would change up every month, every year. They would change up, and that would make our rates go higher. And we've been with tax for a while now, so it's kind of leveled out because it's a pool. And our county may have done less this year, not as much, you know, they had to pay out some stuff for us. But another county may have paid out, so they do it on average with the pool and what each county has put in, that's paid out. But there is some that have, and I left that on my desk, and I apologize. There's the different rates. This, I looked at those, and it would be about $20 less if we went to a different plan, the county. But the deductible is going to go up for the employees. Their out-of-pocket expense is going to go. There's different things, but I'd be more than glad if y'all would look at those. Awesome.
Let's hear what we got already. Been happy.
Yes, sir. Same deductible, same everything. But if we went to another plan with the tax, the deductible will change, the copays will change, if they hadn't paid anything out of pocket. May I say something?
I, you know, I'm telling my age, but I've been around for a long time, that we've gotten to the point, I know Ginger knows also, that we couldn't, it was one year, we can forty-five, they can forty-five, that's like we, they were struggling to find the insurance. And so that's why they, the tax has been so good, and I hate it's going up, and I know, but I just, I know when we go out for bids, ooh, we got to be careful. They, they went through a, a point where they would find cheaper insurance, and we were changing entrances every year, going for the cheaper. And then buying, all of a sudden, buying, we couldn't get it. It was tough, tax, taxes. Anyway, I just.
It took me a long time to get them to understand. Instead of changing every year, if we stick with one company, question one that's pulled, we get a, you may not see it thinking we get a better rate, but we actually do get a better rate. Because ours didn't go up as much this year as it did last year. I just. And I know I fell off with me dealing with cancer. To me, this is a benefit. I consider that part of my salary that the county pays. That's my personal opinion, but to me, that's added to my salary of what I've got. We can't pay much, you know, with our stuff, but to me, this is a benefit, and I'm thankful.
I think what Mr. Wyatt is asking, you didn't reach out to any other agencies to try to get any.
No, because we can advertise to go out for bids. When I brought this to y'all at the budget workshop, letting y'all know that it was time to leave, that was, I needed to have known then to go out for, if we needed to go out for bids, because that's a whole nother process.
Go a week, out of time, or we need to go ahead? Yeah, it's got to be approved and back in by September the seventh.
Some reason y'all want to change, then we need to think about that next. If for some reason y'all want to change, then we need to think about that next year. Because I think we're out of time this time.
Do you, you know, if the insurance industry, you know, sometime the whole industry re-in increase, I'm just wondering, was tax the only one that, that increased or, or the industry itself increased that caused them to increase? You don't know.
I'm not in insurance business, so I don't know that part was what happened. I mean, I can check with people, I don't know, you know, with it.
Everything is, I don't know.
Well, that's what I was, one of them.
Y'all know how it was, general liability and that insurance, having to go doing all that.
Unlike you, this is a great benefit for each employee.
I know that the dependent coverage is kind of high, not working through the years to try to get it to where it would be so high to cover your dependents. But there's, there's never been, not been any solution to that. But we did is, because you know, we pull it out of the paycheck just once a month. And that's the way we did it for years, but the last couple of years, three, four years, people that have gotten dependent coverage for their families or their spouses, we'll take it out of each payroll or it's not one big buy out of their one paycheck. So we take it out too. So that's, we've gotten, actually gotten a lot more people that are doing that where they can get the insurance. And we don't pay retirees insurance. You know, you're on your own once you retire.
Is it Medicare?
Yes.
I make that motion, Judge.
I second.
Motion, Mr. Benson, second, Mr. Thompson. That we approve, approve the renewal of dental, medical life insurance through tax. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Here none passed. Number eight, discuss an appropriate approve adding County Road 2178 to precinct three maintenance road. This is a new established road by Debco. And Mr. Farmby is not here today to, to guide us through this process. And I'd like to ask a few questions. Is, is for this road, has ever been put to road standards and, and would he accept? So I would prefer that y'all table this.
Make that motion, table.
Who made that motion? Motion, Mr. White and second, Mr. Thompson, that we table item number eight. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Here none passed. Item number eight, table. Number nine, discuss an appropriate approve the sale of precinct two salvage equipment. Mr. White?
Okay, this is a contract with an auction near company that all our county commissioners have been auctioning all their excess savage material, equipment it was, for the last few years. And what I presented it a couple of months ago where Sherry asked if, if the DA or had them, though, but didn't approve it. So she has, going to move forward on getting rid of. It is just some old junk in the, in the old, old barnyard. As most of you know, I have relocated over the years and years, the precinct two barn has been physically in precinct three. And we found the guy that's over in the deer gate and we have been running and the old, old barnyard, we got an offset, but we need to finish clearing out all of our junk. And, you know, six pieces of big wood, it's fixed. Old running, it was there when I got there, been there for 10 year, 10 plus years, it's down, sitting there, and we just need to clean, clean that lot up.
Has this equipment got titles or?
Yes.
Do you have those titles in possession?
The owner has them.
Some of those, I really guess. Also, it's been brought to our attention about the equipment that's down there at Richie Richmond Shaw. Did you get a chance to talk to him to see if that, if we want to sell that equipment as well or?
Not at this time. He and, and the ex-commissioner had a, some type of agreement on this equipment. One of them, it was the old G12. We had two of those old G12 graders, which are good machines. I have one in down in South Yard down here. We use it occasionally, go down and do it, but they kept that one to, for spare parts. And it's been over there, just some pieces of grader. And we, we could put that on there, but he, he expressed to me that he had still joint rent. And so I needed, you know, kind of finalize that with, with the commissioner, ex-commissioner on that deal. But those, we, neither one of those are on the yard right now. And that, my, my main focus right now is getting rid of the equipment on the yard so I can clear that out and we can move forward on that. But yeah, that is the issue on the item that I plan to follow along. And we'll, we can, you know, put it in another auction or take care of that.
So this auction is only your equipment, you know?
Tick has a couple items on it.
I have some, I put on, made a list of them. We're not going to try to get those on there.
Well, the main thing here is, is the, I think it's a, on here approved, the, the contract with that, that was taken to auction here is what we were.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it says the precinct business as well.
It does.
Precinct 8, so I want to get there.
Okay. Same to save it, okay.
So this contract's not good for all the commissioner?
I'm just reading what their agenda says.
Yeah.
The contract will be good for all of them, but I'm just saying, okay, agenda says the 63.
Yeah.
Well, we can, we can always. Get yours and take us on. We can go ahead and approve this. I can start.
Well, the item's going to have to be amended.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We'll come back with, with precinct three and four equipment on the next court. But we need to go forward and I can get back in touch with these folks and I'll know that we, we are going to be coming their way.
So this contract don't have to be approved before we approve your sale of the salvage?
Well, that's what we're throwing up.
This, this is not what it says. It says the sale, approval of the sale law. It don't say anything about a contract.
Okay. Well, that was the question, yeah. You're like, that was the original question was, was this, this company, a lawful company and the contract issued? So that's what, we, we can table it if we got other commissioners that want to get rid of some stuff.
No, I'm, I'm saying the contract itself. Is this a brand new contract?
No.
Is, is this something that's been, that's been approved by the court before?
Well, okay, well, I, I, the question was, it, it, as we, as the DA looked at the contract and like you, but then this is the same auction here, I don't know, I had to look back at the records for us to, to deal and, and.
Big Park, this court.
And I know you looked at, looked at the contract itself, but my question is, has this contract been approved through the commissioner court?
It's not that I'm aware of.
So the process would be approve the contract and then we can go ahead and approve the, the sale of this, but we have also got to approve the contract in which we.
Correct.
We reached negotiation with.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, back to the original question was to prove the sale of. I'd say they can because they don't have any bird to sell it to yet. You understand what I'm saying?
Why don't we table it and put all of the next court section through the contract and then prove precinct two, three, and four to get rid of, put the, the excess savage equipment on the, on the.
Please make the motion.
No, make the motion. We take this item.
I second.
Motion, Mr. White and second, Mr. Thompson, that we, we table item number nine. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Here none passed. Number 10, discuss an appropriate approve vulnerability testing zone, dome for Newton for county network and website scanning, Ms. Shannon.
All right. So I'm just seeking approval to do some vulnerability scanning on our networks using the advanced tools that CISA providing for free to us. CISA stands for Cyber Security and Industrial Security Agency, which is a component, first under Department of Homeland Security, or the agency. And so they're going to provide us some of their tools, they're going to work with us. I'm already ready to, with it. I just need, before I do anything on our network, I want y'all to know about it, approve it if y'all want to. This would only, we, we can only benefit from these types of things. They would basically, and it outlines all of that in y'all paperwork, what all they would do, some penetration testing, so forth, send out, fish and email, whatever they can do to pose as a hacker trying to get into our system and gain access to our files, take over ransomware, whatever it is. And good thing would be we'd get our system back, whether, you know, hacked or paid off.
It's not going to cost the county anything?
Yes. We want to see if we're vulnerable and fix those, their, you know, problems.
Change nothing but benefit them.
Yes, sir. Landscape of cybersecurity is constantly changing. You know, these networks, the equipment we use, the computers, everything, which is, they always, they have these millions of little chips in them and it's built all around the world, these things, they just, one day it's good, the next week it changes a little life and, and something happens and they hack that piece. And then unless we scan for those changes, it is something we constantly need to look out for.
So the testing, the, the testing that's going to be going on between you and them will not cost us anybody. But let's say that we are caught in a vulnerability stage, we, it may be a call to upgrade or whatever.
Yeah, we're not saying we have money to fix the problem, but just identify problems and we'll revisit, see if it's something you want to fix or not, or pose as a big threat or not.
At least it'd be brought to the commissioner court's attention that we do have a problem.
Yes, sir.
But you're asking the court to approve this study at no cost at the time, at present time?
And it would be going on, on the network. We probably start off one, one network or main one here at the workhouse and I can expand it later, do the support house and the, you know, JP's office and so forth, and we'll get all of them on us. But shouldn't disrupt any services or anything. They can't guarantee that. That's what we'd be approving, that they're in our system, running these tests during work hours, at night, everything.
Have you considered your starting or finished completion dates or times or?
It, it's gonna, it's asking that in here and that's, that's something y'all, y'all want to start, finish. I don't know if it takes them a week. It's something that we can address correspondence with them, didn't layer any of that stuff. How long it's going to take them? I'm thinking it only takes them a couple of days. And then they'll, most of it'll be the reports after they get the data they need. That signature gets us started and gets them responding to me.
So your cost wouldn't be any extra to the, to the county? It's be within your contract with the county, with the IT department, right?
Aye.
It, it wouldn't be an extra cost to, to the commissioner court or the county for your work on this project?
No, sir. Do everything I can for the county.
I make that motion.
We do accept it.
Your second?
Yeah, second.
Motion, Mr. Thompson, second, Mr. White. We approve this bone melding test zone for Newton, for county network and website scanning, Ms. Shannon. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Here none passed. Number 11 and 12 is ongoing, the declaration that is on our agenda each month, and I'll just lump those together as one item unless y'all want to separate them or discontinue. That's to extend the COVID-19, Eric and Laura Disaster Declaration for September 12, 2022.
Make a motion, we, we extend our COVID application until September 12.
I second.
Motion, Mr. White, second, Mr. Benson. We extend our COVID-19, Antarctica Law of this, uh, Decrement for September 12, 2022. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Here none passed. I hear motion to adjourn.
Make the motion, we adjourn.
I second.
Motion, Mr. White, second, Mr. Thompson, to adjourn. At the end of the day.